Okay, we'll call it to order this October the 16th, 2019, in meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
President.
Commissioner Waymire?
President.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
You'd all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Craig Robertson of the First Christian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, as we have gathered now, we pray that the work of this commission will do the will of the people and will listen to each other and pay attention, and we all get along in this world. Bless us and guide us, your Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Anything under correspondence or organizational business there?
No, sir.
Okay. Takes us to public comment. We had someone signed up. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussions should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Lowell Goodman, if you come up and state your name and address for the commissioners.
Good morning. I'm Lowell Goodman. I live at 2228 Haskell Road. I'd like to address the condition of our gravel roads. Monday, I took a little tour of the southeast, southwest part of our county. It became obvious to me it wasn't just by blade man, but it's the general condition of how the blade men operate. We're digging four, at some cases, six inches lips on the side of our road. Makes water run down the road, creates gullies, runs to the lowest point, typically culverts, washes out the edges of the culverts. In some cases, they're not fixed. Those areas have water standing in them. Cars come over, trucks come over, potholes develop. This is unacceptable. I've been a carpenter since 1973, been a construction superintendent with multimillion dollar jobs. This is unacceptable for the county. It's getting worse. We need to do something. I don't know. Obviously, it's the blade men are told to do it that way because it's consistent with like three or four areas. So I would like this commission to start addressing it because we're probably wasting thousands of tons of gravel that we don't need to waste if we just get together and get these roads fixed. I guess, I think you're probably going to hear more, maybe not from me, but from other people because there's kind of a ground swell coming, and I think we need to get it addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no one else? Takes us to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda that need considering and approved today are the commission meeting minutes from October the 9th, 2019, study session minutes from October the 14th, 2019, and claim vouchers in an amount of $1,218,054.77. Would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's removed.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Roy, second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. First item of business today, approval of rezoning application 1906-1906-1687 to rezone approximately 14.44 acres from an A1 zoning district to an RE zoning district. Letters.
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a request to rezone a little over 14 acres from the agricultural zoning district to an RE residential state zone. The planning commission considered this earlier this year and have forward a recommendation to you for the approval of the rezoning request. It does satisfy all of our requirements for our subdivision regulations, our zoning regulations, as well as the goals and objectives of our comprehensive plan. For all practical purposes, this property has been divided from the remainder of that acreage for a number of years because Old Highway 50 cuts off that particular corner of the property. So it's actually been independent and served independently from the remainder of that property. You can see it best on the survey that should be attached as a part of your staff report. So it's the triangular piece that's on the south side of Old Highway 50, and we would ask that you accept the planning commission's recommendation to rezone this property from A1 through the RE residential state and direct staff to amend our official county zoning maps accordingly.
Pre-cut. Any questions on this?
Roy?
Roy?
I don't have that in my packet.
Yeah, we were going to say, we don't have the survey, but it makes sense anyway, so without looking at it.
Well, maybe...
It was not attached.
Maybe mine was the only, only one, but...
Doesn't make sense.
Okay. That's all the question I had. That's...
That's been cut off there for...
Don, you want to look at this?
Highway 50 was made, was, did it have been originally from when Old Highway 50 was put through there?
Oh, yes.
And how long had that been? A long time?
It's been a long, long time.
Yeah.
Okay, if no questions on this, would look for a motion to approve rezoning application 1906-1687 to rezone approximately 14.44 acres from an A1 to an RE zoning district.
Would you approve?
Have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Item number two, consider and approve updating resolution number 00-62 Franklin County Subdivision Road Design Criteria and Standards. David?
Commissioners, we discussed this at length on Monday in the study session. Essentially, what we're asking to do is increase the standards required for subdivisions within Franklin County. Currently, our standard allows for a six inches of base covered by a double chip seal. So you end up with, at a maximum, approximately a half inch of cover material over that six inch base. It provides no structural integrity and leads to, it's prone to rutting, potholing, and edge ravelling. So we end up having to spend more maintenance dollars on these things after the fact, after the subdivisions are in. With this new standard going to approximately four inches of asphalt over a six inch base, will provide more structural integrity and will get more life out of those subdivision roads, thereby reducing the maintenance costs over time. And so that's what we're asking for today. One slight change from what we discussed on Monday. After the meeting, and actually after I sent in this, the cover sheet and information, Larry and I had a conversation. He looked at his subdivision regulations and the warranty time. I had in the original, well, it was in the original resolution at four years. In 2007, the subdivision regulations during that update, that warranty period is just two years. And so that's what our subdivision regulations have. We researched all the resolutions. We couldn't find where Resolution 0062 had ever been updated. Larry looked. I looked again this morning. I also looked at approximately a dozen different communities around this area and around the state that I know have development on a regular basis to see what their warranty standards were, and the most restrictive is two years. It ranges from everything from the county engineer, public works director accepting the improvements at the end of the construction, which would, you know, there would be no warranty at that point, to a year, which is what the city of Ottawa has, and two years being the most restrictive and the most common. So what we would like to do today is approve the new resolution with a two-year warranty period. Everything else remains just as we discussed on Monday.
We did pretty good on Monday. Is there any questions on this?
David, have you had any comments from developers or anybody asking about this?
No. I did chat with some other communities, surface material and those sorts of things. One of their comments, in Miami County specifically, was that there was some fear that requiring asphalt would limit, would hinder development, and so they have maintained their chip seal requirements and those sorts of things, even though they acknowledge that just what we face, the maintenance costs after the fact are borne by the citizens of all over the county rather than the developer upfront. So that is one of the driving factors for folks staying with the status quo.
It'd take a lot of development to warrant a $90,000 a mile. Yeah.
I really, personally, I think development is positive. Again, if it's done in an appropriate manner, it helps. It helps us all. I don't want, the part that I don't like is having to, for the citizens at large, to have to pay these higher maintenance costs because we didn't enforce things right up, right up front. And so, and there's nothing to say that if we get pushback from developers that we can't amend things down the road. We have that, we have that power, so.
Anything else?
Is this the same standard for our county roads when we went to hard surface?
We don't have any standards for our county roads currently.
I bet you, if we decide to do some more hard service, we're not doing chip and seal.
That would be correct. Again, for the very same reasons.
All right, absolutely.
You know, I try to look at these things in the long term because this county's going to be here long after I'm gone, and just doing the bare minimum to make things better for today and not paying attention to what's going to happen tomorrow. I think that's short sighted on our part. I think that, you know, it's going to require us to plan ahead, which I don't think is ever a problem. And so I have no issues with the four inches of asphalt, and quite frankly, I wish all of our hard service roads had four inches of asphalt, and, you know, that's, that's something that...
We did Montana Road. We put down eight inches of asphalt and about a foot of base.
That would be, that's...
And it is, it is not holding up with all the truck traffic on that road.
So it's a, it's a serious issue. The best road that we have in the county right now is a mile of Kingman Road and a mile of Montana Road, where we have, I forget the depth of the base, but it's significant, and we have 10 inches of concrete.
That'd be too expensive.
Correct. So there, you know, we have to balance all that out.
Anything else? I would look for a motion to approve resolution, excuse me, updating resolution number 0062 Franklin County Subdivision Road Design Criteria and Standards. Have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Takes us to staff reports. Derek?
I don't have anything today.
Larry?
Commissioner meeting tomorrow evening. The item on that agenda, the most pertinent one will be the consideration of the renewable energy facilities. That includes both the wind energy and solar systems and solar has a great sell a whole lot of interest. All welcome to the, and it is a public hearing. We've had several workshops on it, and we're finally getting to the public hearing.
And at 6:30?
Yes.
What's that, tomorrow or next week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay. This is the public hearing tomorrow? Anything else?
Couple of quick updates. First, the windows of the jail, we had talked about recaucking those quite a while ago. We rented a lift yesterday and got most of those done. Got a little bit we need to do that we couldn't, we couldn't get with the lift, but I think we can get them with a ladder or something. Those were, once we got up to the windows, a lot of that was significantly worse than we thought that it was. So really glad to get that taken care of. Also, I came to you a few weeks ago with that gentleman from Reno Dry to talk about their system. I've done some more research on that, trying to find out anything else that I can, and I've talked to a few more people that have had that system in place. I talked to Blue Earth County, Watanwin County, Martin County, and Carlton College, all in Minnesota. They've had those systems in for just under a year to a little over a year, and they're all giving positive results from that, from having that system in. Beyond that, there's not a whole lot more evidence wise, as far as like any studies or anything like that, specifically through Reno Dry. This company broke off of a parent company a number of years ago, probably three, four years ago, and so Reno Dry does not have those, all that research. The other company, Aquapool, does. So that's the reason why we can't get ahold of that stuff through Reno Dry. They don't, it's not theirs to give out anymore. It's all held by Aquapool.
This is one of those projects that I know was discussed when I was out on paternity leave. I have a lot of questions associated with this. I've looked into it a fair bit, and the science behind it seems awfully sketchy, so I'm going to look into it along with Brandon, and we're going to see if there's something we can do to get that data because as of now, it's, it's hard for, I think it's hard for me to justify a recommendation when there's really nothing we have saying it works. I mean, we have a handful of counties saying that they think that it's working, but there's really no way for them to know whether or not this is the, you know, to contribute to that. And so I would tell you that this is something we'll probably table indefinitely until we can find, you know, obviously, I work for this board, if you all feel differently, but at this juncture, I can't justify the spending the tax dollars without something more to grab on to saying, you know, we know slurry seal's going to help with the parking lot. We know that. We can find data and science that shows that, and until we can get to that point, I think we're going to hold off.
Is it drying up because it's working, or is it drying up because it's a drier year?
That's exactly right.
But the only thing is, okay, so if, if we aren't going this direction, we still have moisture over there. We still have people working in the basement with moisture. So we need an option, you know, then if we're not going with this option, we need, what other options are there? So definitely, when you're working on that, you need to be working on something.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then they do have humidifiers in the basement, don't they?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Oh, dehumidifiers, sorry.
Okay.
Dehumidifiers, yes.
Both of you have covered it. It's kind of interesting that they just opened a new office in the Kansas City area, yet there's nobody in this area to check with how it's worked for them. So, I mean, it sounds like they've been here for a while.
Well, they do have people that have, but it just hasn't been a very long period, right? Because, yeah.
Yeah, they've been, my understanding, they're just trying to expand. They've moved, I don't know why they picked Kansas City, but they ended up down here and...
And they really haven't gave you any...
They don't have.
...a local to check with, how it's working for them in this area. It's all back in Minnesota.
I've read the minutes of some other counties they presented to up north, several of them. I've read into a lot and tried to read into the science, which of course, their website's completely void of. But this is an antenna, so just like would be on your car, it's a passive antenna. It doesn't plug in. It's a oil wire inside of this deal, if not powered, and hooked to a ground that hangs from the ceiling. And that's supposed to keep the water out. The science they referenced, they had a few times, oh, there's a Harvard scientist figured out that water has a frequency, and, and, yeah, that's kind of true, but this relevance was hydro, water has a frequency, so they can listen to space and listen for that frequency coming from planets to see if it has water on it. So, I mean, you know, I guess by that theory, if they're listening for water in space, it'd be sucking water out of, you know, it'd be raining above them. But again, it's not a, yeah.
The last time we talked about this, we basically tabled it, so I don't see a reason to do anything different now. I think you guys check more and come back later on, so. Thank you. Sheriff?
Couple of things. Our inmate count in the jails is in the low 70s. We also have a dozen people that are farmed out. So that puts our inmate count over 80. From checking with neighboring counties, we have a much larger jail population than our neighboring counties, almost double what even Miami County has, and they're a bigger county. So we're doing a little checking to kind of figure out what, what's going on with that. The preliminary checks that we're doing, a lot of it has to do with economics. People are just not able to bond, to post their bonds to get out of jail. But I don't have any real true answers at this point, but it is a such, it is a situation that we have. We have a much larger inmate count than our, than those around us. So we are looking into it to kind of figure out what, what is causing that, what the drivers are. And if there's anything that's systemic that we can, that we can address, then, then we will do that. We just don't have any answers for it right now, but I wanted you guys to be aware that that is, that that's there.
Do you think maybe our county attorney being more aggressive and doing more cases than what we have in the past has put more people there?
Could be, could be. There could be many, many factors. We could have more aggressive law enforcement than the neighboring counties. It, it could be a variety of things. I'm not, I'm not for sure. It could be the judges. So I don't, I don't have any real answers right now. There's a lot of different areas that we need to look at that are possibilities, but I don't have that answer. So. Also, just so you're aware, the past six or seven years, I've served on the state multidisciplinary working group for the sexual assault initiative, and tomorrow, we're going to be rolling out our public campaign, public education for, to help combat sexual assault. So if you see, our new project is called Yes This Room, and you may be seeing some things come out of that. We'll be in, I'll be in Topeka tomorrow for the, for the press conference and the, and the official rollout of that, of that project. So just don't want anybody to be caught off guard when you, if, if I'm not able to avoid all the cameras. So the last thing I have is that through our promotion processes, whenever we have a promotion, one of the steps that we, that we've been including is that, is that when someone is going to be promoted to, particularly to a sergeant or above in those positions, we have them present to us an idea, a vision that they have for the sheriff's office, and a project that they think is something that we could do to help improve the service that we provide to the community. Our most newly promoted sergeant was Jesse Vega, and his idea had to do with getting cops into schools. As you know, we don't have a school resource officer in the county schools. That's funding on the county's part, but in larger part because of the school districts. Jesse came up with an idea and a schedule of a way that we can address this without costing us any more funds by using on-duty personnel and then volunteer hours from our reserves. And we are in the process of meeting, setting up the meetings to meet with all the administrators out in our county schools. And the feedback we've had so far has been, has been very well received. They're excited about the program. And so as we move forward and start having our set down, the formal meetings, I just wanted you, the board, to be aware because you may hear some of that through conversation at other meetings and things. I just wanted to let you know that's something we're looking to do, and we have staff that's pretty excited about it. It was an idea that was generated from the staff through that process, and we, we want to empower them to run with that, and we think it'll end up being a good thing, so.
I know that when my son was with Bentonville, Arkansas PD, they had a program some, kind of like this. They actually had SROs in their middle school and their high schools, but they had, and like I said, we're talking about a money situation, but anyway, they had a situation where they could go in, off-duty officers would go in and spend a day at an elementary school. They were actually paid as they were working, but that's how they, and they didn't have them all in all the elementaries, but just anybody could sign up that was off-duty that day and go spend a day at an elementary school and get paid for it and spend a day there with the kids and stuff, so.
What, what we have done, because we're not looking to have a financial burden to anybody, the county or the schools, and so it won't have that, but one of the things that we have done as well has been, we have, we have served as lunch buddies, where we have someone, we go in in uniform, sit down and have lunch with the kids at the, at the grade schools, and that's very well received. The schools give us a, give, they give us a free meal to sit in there and just chat with kids, and they usually are able to let us know which kids would probably benefit the most from, from sitting there and having that interaction with us. And so that has been a, there's been success with that as well, and so this, this is just going to kind of enhance a lot of that and provide a little bit more security and interaction, we think, so.
Eating school lunches, huh? Okay.
Yeah, not often. Thank you.
Mitch? David?
Okay. I have been out on the roads a little bit myself, and the driving service of the roads, at least where I was, in the, you know, Pomona and north and back to the east, those roads are improving.
those roads are improving. The driving service is a lot better than, than it has been, partially due to the, the nice weather that we've had for the most part here lately. The blade operators are working diligently to make improvements. This work is gonna continue for months and months, we'll, we'll still be dealing with flood-related issues into the spring and summer next year. The citizen that spoke earlier about the lips on the road and those sorts of things, those issues have been around for a long time, it's something that every county deals with. We simply can't haul enough material to these blade operators to do the things that they need to do, especially now with the condition of the roads, so they tend to dig down a little deeper than, than, than folks think they ought to, to be able to retrieve material, to be able to put back on the road. We do have some operators in some of the districts that are in a little better condition, didn't have the severity of the flooding issues that we've had this year. They have, in some areas, started pulling those lips, cutting them down and fixing those up. All of the blade operators endeavor to do that. It is simply still too wet in most of those locations to safely and adequately get into the ditches to do that work. It's not lost on myself or any of the superintendent or foreman or the blade operators or anybody, the necessity to make sure that our roads are in, in good condition, from the center of the road all the way down to the bottom of the ditch. But our priority is and always will be that driving service, the middle of the road. And as things improve and as we get time, we will make improvements to the edges and to the ditches and those sorts of things. We have 2,200 miles of ditches that we have to maintain with nine blade operators, okay? It's gonna take time. Again, these things didn't occur overnight, they're not gonna be fixed overnight, and I'm happy to, to meet and discuss this with, with anybody that, that cares to do so. But we, we have made improvements, we are making improvements, we had a, we were gonna close a mile of Cloud Road today to make several improvements along that stretch, west of Eisenhower on Cloud Road that continues to wash out in, in multiple locations because of all the, the water that ends up in our, in our road right away from the fields in that area, but one storm cloud that passes through Kansas, yeah, they dumped on Franklin County and, and, so we had to call off that project because it's simply too wet to do what we need to do. So we, we are paying attention, we do have these things on our radar, we are making progress and doing these reconstruction projects in areas that need it, as we have time and as weather and, and conditions allow us, so, you know, I just ask everyone to bear with us, let us know if you have concerns so that we can visit with you about it, but it's not gonna be fixed overnight.
Unless your blade operators continue to go to training.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, all of those things are happening. I may not talk about it every day or in every commission meeting, but all of those things are happening behind the scenes, we talk as a group, we have conversations, we monitor the progress, we evaluate the roads, all of those things are happening, but it's just gonna take time to make these improvements. We all have high standards, I have high standards for, for our folks, they have high standards, they, you know, they're concerned about the roads that they, they maintain. So anyway, that's, that's gonna be an ongoing thing, but we're, we're, we're making improvements there. We're also catching up on the mowing, it's, you know, that, that one thing makes a huge difference to our ability to work on the edges and work on the ditches, and so not being able to have those, all those roads mowed in a timely manner has hindered our ability to, you know, maintain our roads, so we're catching up on that. On the positive side of things, 59 and Kingman is, is coming along, we did reach out to KDOT, and they have agreed to allow us to reduce the speed limit through those areas, so that, that'll be happening in the coming days, we'll get it down to 45 through that area. The concrete is almost done, they were, I was out there Monday morning, and they were pouring concrete and getting set up to, to do some curb and gutter through there, so they're almost done with that, and they were doing a lot of grading and, and whatnot on the edge of the highway to get that sorted out, so they are, they are moving right along. Hopefully, the rain yesterday doesn't significantly impact their, their schedule, I don't think it will, but it certainly makes the working conditions tougher, but they're, they're progressing, and we're patching. We were able to do some patching yesterday on a, on a side, and we're out on Missouri Drive today, had a huge area that had a big, big pothole and some rutting and alligator cracking, all the things that you want, do not wanna see in your, your asphalt roads, and so we're, we're out working on that today, and, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue doing that, because we have some other spots on our roads that need to be addressed as well, so we're trying to fit all of that stuff in with the personnel that we have, you know, and anytime we have one or two people off with sick leave or vacation, it really reduces our, our, our ability to do the job that we signed up for, so doing the best we can.
Are we finished with the chip and sealing?
Yes.
When, have you heard anything from the company that's coming in to put the lines on?
Painting is done.
It's what?
It is done.
They didn't do the Richmond Street?
I don't know, I haven't been to Richmond, is it not done?
It wasn't done Tuesday, last Tuesday, but let me, they may, when did they come in, have they been here recently?
This weekend, they were here.
Then it may be done, because that was a week ago I was over there.
They were, they did most of it, I think, on Saturday.
Okay, it could very well be done, because it was last week, and then I drove through Richmond and it wasn't done, so.
I could find out.
It's, it probably is done, I just hadn't been there since this weekend.
The areas that I drove yesterday that, that they had done looked, looked nice.
It's probably done. Janet?
Two things, tomorrow is Franklin County leadership session, and the morning session is open to the public, and it is Lieutenant Colonel Dave Young, and he's doing a session on error reduction and why we get things wrong, so there's quite a few department heads here, so, you know, if anyone has anyone that's interested in going to that, it's at OMA, is that correct? At OMA in the morning, at 8:30, 8:30 to 11:00, so that is a public session. The second thing is, advanced ballots are going out today, and we'll still send advanced ballots out after today, but we're sending the initial batch of 228 out today, so if people still wanna get an advanced ballot, they can still file for one with my office, and we'll get one out to them as soon as we receive their application, so.
All right, takes us to commissioner comments and board reports. Don?
Yeah. Come back, I don't think I have anything on this one.
I went to Chamber Coffee last Friday for Dale Pearson of Modern Woodman, although Dale's been a businessman in the community for a long time, he recently joined the, the chamber, his company does a lot of, good for a lot of different organizations, and then just a reminder that next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday will be the emergency management, whatever, for the whole county, too, so I think it's Tuesday afternoon, all day Wednesday, and then half a day on Thursday.
Last night, I went to the ECAN governance training, it's an annual event, with a lady come in from Bowling Green, Kentucky, to be the moderator, and it has mainly to do with Head Start and the federal funding of Head Start, they wanna make sure everybody gets federal funding for that, does all the paperwork, all the eligibility, all the, all the stuff required by the federal government to put on that program of Head Start and early Head Start. ECAN has a Head Start program in seven counties and, and, that's training, that well is required by the federal government to make sure everything's going right, that's the only I've been at. Might make a comment, by this gentleman's comment from the public, all of us have gray hair, we, we know what the roads were when we first started driving at 14, you, you were driving on dirt roads then, and you didn't go out if it was, it was raining or muddy, and any kind of road that had a little gravel on it was like a super highway back then, and so the evolution of our roads continues on, and as we get more people that come, come to our county that expect, you know, excellent roads all the time, it's, sometimes those expectations aren't met, so we do get a lot of negative comments about how we maintain our roads, because as soon as you, as soon as you move to the county, or out in the county you're an expert on road maintenance and how that should work, and, so, when we get these negative comments by, by the public, I just, all I imagine is that they haven't lived in the county very long. Personally, that's what I, I think is tremendously better than what it used to be when I was returning to driving.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been to anything since our last meeting, and with that, we have a joint luncheon today at noon, it's here. If any of you commissioners have anything that you wanna bring up there, think about it, because I don't have much at all. We've basically been zoning changes is about the main thing I have with the last couple of meetings that we've had, so I don't have a whole lot to present there today, but...
Is there interest on the board in bringing up Legacy Square?
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
I think that would be a good opportunity to do that, so, yeah, definitely, and, and we should also remind them about the public hearing tomorrow.
I don't know, my only thing is, the only question I would have was, is if we wanted to do it there with the school board and everything, or if we wanted to have a separate meeting like with the chamber and the city and without the school board being there, but I don't have a...
The goodest place is any.
Issue anyway, so...
Yeah, good way to start.
At least all three would be there.
And my opinion is, this is what this joint luncheons are for, to discuss stuff that's going on between the three, so I have no problem with it. Alrighty, anything else? Like I said, joint luncheon today, no study session next week, commission meeting on the 23rd, if there's nothing else, we look for a motion to adjourn. So, have a motion as our second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.